Manufactured homes, single wide, double wide manufactured homes, that's the only zone of the district where those would be allowed to go. There is another classification of pre-constructed buildings that are called modular homes. Modular homes have more inspections, they're brought in in units and put together on site by federal and state guidelines. Those can go anywhere, stick-built homes.
Why would we have a mobile home park district? Why do we need that?
You have to somehow address placement of manufactured housing. If you want to have...
Do we have any of those zoning districts at this point?
No, sir. Our current zoning ordinance does not even address manufactured housing.
Are you saying federal law requires that we have some type of MHP district somewhere in the city?
No, sir. What I'm saying is the latest Georgia Supreme Court ruling involving manufactured housing allows local governments to have one zoning district that could be designated for manufactured housing.
Allows but not requires?
Yes.
So we don't have any mobile home zoning now?
No, we do not.
Are you proposing to create that mobile home?
Yes, sir. To overcome some potential court challenges, that sort of thing. In our current zoning ordinance, there's a definition for mobile home, manufactured home, modular home, but they're not allowed in any of the zoning districts, whether it's in the chart of uses or in the list within the text.
I thought you were saying that the law would allow a manufactured home in any residential zoning district.
No, a modular home.
A modular home?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, right now, the other two was mobile home and what else?
Manufactured home.
Okay, so, you... why do we need a park for that? Why should we...
Wait until we get to request for one rather than encourage it.
If you don't have an allowance for a manufactured home somewhere, whether it's in our 40 zoning district, in our 20 zoning district, there's a chance that the courts would allow them to go in any residential zoning district.
How do you define modular home versus manufactured home?
Manufactured home has a DCA inspection sticker after 76. It has limited inspections. The modular home has every aspect of the construction of the product inspected, and there's a different sticker that comes with those homes. They're brought in in sections, if you will, and put together.
So it might understand that those can go anywhere?
Yes, sir. And that's what our proposed regulations will allow.
They could go anywhere or just go into that one?
No, they could go in any residential district, the modular homes.
And they could go out to Laurel Canyon, Great Sky?
Sure. As far as the city's concerned, yes, sir. That's up to Laurel Canyon or Great Sky HOA and covenants to enforce anything that they have in regards to no allowance for that type of a residential structure.
But Ken, if I understand you correctly, you're saying, A, we don't have zoning which currently allows those types of houses; B, you have some reason to believe that the state Supreme Court, in effect, will or would require us to accommodate that type of housing? And in that case, what you're suggesting is that we go ahead now preemptively and designate a specific area for that accommodation?
Where, with the text specifying a zoning district designation, that would allow for the placement of those.
So you're not saying we'll have a map showing an area?
Correct.
So we're not going to have any zoning of that, but we're going to allow people to petition for that type of zone?
Yes, sir. The proposed draft zoning map does not show any property for MHP zoning district designation. There was a Georgia Supreme Court ruling from 2010, if I believe, involving the city of Bainbridge, in which they upheld the city of Bainbridge's zoning ordinance as it relates to manufactured housing, in which, in the Bainbridge ordinance, all of their residential zoning districts, and the intent for those zoning districts had language specifically prohibiting manufactured housing, and then had this MHP district as a place that would allow for manufactured housing, as well as the older mobile homes, which are pre-1976.
If someone today wanted to put a mobile home in a subdivision, how would you prevent that?
At the current time, what folks have been told is that there's no allowance for manufactured housing in the city. As individuals that have asked...
What would be their appeals rights? What would they... did they go before the variance board and ask that a variance be granted in that zoning for them to place one there?
That would be a request for an additional use, which would not... you generally cannot grant a variance to a use.
Okay, so they could... but if they asked for an additional use, then it would go through the planning and zoning?
They would have to request an amendment to the text.
So they do have a method and a procedure now by which they could place one?
They would have to request an amendment to the text of the zoning ordinance. They would have to go through the process, whether it's conditional use approval, permitted use, would be an option and avenue that would have to be pursued at the current time.
Or they go to court and sue us because we effectively banned them, which Ken did. What's happened over time is there was first a Supreme Court case that says you can't ban them citywide, which is what everybody used to do. You can't have mobile homes at all in the city. Supreme Court said you can't do that. Then the next case, the one Mr. Pat was referring to, is the city of Bainbridge. They had created a single classification, and they sued and said you can't do that because that's effectively banning them. And the Supreme Court said, no, you can control it by zoning. You can shuffle them off to one place and not allow them to ban them.
But how can you have a zoning text there but no maps that allow for it? Is that not effectively doing the same thing?
It might be.
Maybe you might be saying, yeah, you can have one. We got it right here. Says you can have one, but we don't have any zoning area or land use plan that allows for it anywhere within our city.
But you might be able to bring us a place that we would think it would be appropriate, and if that happens, we'll approve it.
Have them come forward and you know better than that.
Well, it's one step better than not having... not allowing it at all. And right now, if somebody applied, we'd say they're just not allowed.
Well, they still got... they still got the procedure by which they could petition the city to allow them to do that.
Well, they'd have to ask us to change our ordinance in the way that Mr. Pat's talking about changing it, and we would probably be required to do so. Because right now, we banned them, which we're not allowed to do. It's just trying to be preemptive and keeping somebody from suing us on that first step of forcing us to do exactly this.
Why do we have to say that they got to sue us? Let them bring something and ask. If they ask, fine, we might have to do it. But I don't see anything why we should put it in there just to please a code or something like that at the moment.
Please a statute?
Yeah.
Supreme Court?
Well, the Supreme Court, it won't go to the Supreme Court. We'll handle it locally when it comes up, the variance. We'll handle it.
The only problem with that is that it may come up relative to a particular tract, parcel, or area where you really would not have wanted it to come up. Under his suggestion, you can at least now preemptively control the area where it's limited to be able to come up. Right now, you can come up anywhere and shoot.
So how do we go about selecting that land? Because it's probably would be value that land and the land around it.
If you've got a district though, if you've got a district there, I can go in any district right now and go before the planning and zoning commission and say, I want to change two acres of that CG zoning to MHP so I can put a mobile home there.
And you would be able to say no where it is?
Right.
I mean, you'd be able to come in and... that's a rezoning. As opposed to right now, they have to not only get a rezoning, they have to get you to create the classification. It's just another step. And the actual fear is not that somebody will do that and that you have to do it. The fear is that somebody will come in and say, because you don't allow it at all, I can put it anywhere I want. That's what the fear is. That a court will say, because you've not properly dealt with it, they're going to get to do it where they want to. That's what he's trying to prevent.
Are we going to have right now...
What?
We have right now, given the code, post additions, fill bookstores. Okay. We've got something in here. Because Bobby, I remember one time he said, we don't have it in here, and somebody comes in and then we try to fill something around it, we're going to lose. So why not take their suggestion, here's what suggestion, say, fine, just go stick it in there?
The other thing, doesn't it... like Mr. Parrish was saying, by having it in, it gives us freedom to designate where it's going to be. Whereas if we leave it out...
Citywide?
Citywide.
Yeah.
If we leave it out, and somebody comes and wants it where we don't want it, we've got a battle on our hands.
We may not be able to fix it because they will have already asked. That's the problem. We do control where I would go because we could have standards at that point and say, well, we're not going to let it go next to Laurel Canyon. We're not going to let it go next to Great Sky. We're not going to let it go next to W.S. River Green. And so we can say no and have reasons for saying no. As opposed to, well, we just don't allow it.
And there are some additional standards for...
There are all the zoning standards. It would devalue the neighbors. It would create too much traffic. It would...
We're up for number one.
The other thing to do is if you can identify an area in the city where you can say, you know what, if there's going to be one, that's where we would want it to go.
Right next to Logan Park, certainly.
Isn't there already kind of a mobile home park down near Legion Field?
There is an area over near Legion Field where there are quite a few manufactured homes.
There used to be a mobile home park there off of Harmon Circle.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
You've been talking about the mobile home park and just say, they're already there? We'll just let that be the place to get to?
The draft Unified Development Code in Chapter Four also has additional standards for how these manufactured home parks have to be built in regards to the sizes for the lots, for the placement of the individual structures, the streets, the water, sewer, buffers, things of that nature, minimum acreage. All of that is also contained with additional requirements in Chapter Four.
Did you know wheel and sales office is a manufactured home?
It's probably a modular office.
Manufactured and modular, yeah.
Same thing was against L.A. as well, but they were just offices. They weren't homes.
Got a roof on? Looks like they'll go on out.
Well, they moved it away after they did it, so that way they just called it off. But I think this is probably the best way for the city to go, is to make the designation, and then when it comes up, then we can face it and not be defensive as defensive that we would be if we didn't have it.
Same.
I go one. The next item on the list involves landscape buffer, in which there was some language on Page 3 dash Board, Section 3.0, 3.03C, less than two units per acre. Councilman Rush said seems to equate to one unit. The language is confusing. Part of the reason the language had been written that way, if you think about our residential... residential zoning districts, that is kind of a correct thought, but you have to factor in planned developments in which you have a multitude of residential densities or types and that sort of thing. And this language was kind of carried forward from our older zoning ordinance. What we would propose is get away from the density and let's talk in terms of a lot size or possibly lot size lock with building setback as it relates to these street trees and front yard areas. What the issue with this has become is on a lot of the smaller lots, for instance, out at Selay within Laurel Canyon, those lots are five, six thousand square feet, and there was a requirement for a front yard overstory tree. Those trees are growing up larger now on some of these lots, and because of a fifteen-foot front yard setback with the sidewalk, with water lines, sewer lines, you've only got about a five hundred square foot front yard area, and we're running into issues with the root systems on these understorey and overstory trees affecting water lines, gas lines, growing in sewer lines affecting meters, things of that nature. That's one way to sort of overcome that is look and think in terms of a minimum lot size such as ten thousand square feet. We're going to do some more research on this in regards to lot widths, as well as front yard setbacks.
Ken, I can attest to that because we have this overstory tree planted about five feet from my water meter and about six feet from my sprinkler system and probably directly over the sewer cleanup line. So, but, and my wife said, there's only one thing she's ever asked her councilman for, and that's get rid of that damn tree.
Is he still there?
No.
Councilman must have done his job.
Our office has been working with homeowners in regards to this issue for a number of years. Some of the requirements and some of our developments are conditions of zoning approval. Then there are some things in our thoughtful regulations, and we think a better way to maybe handle that is get away from this density and start addressing it from a lot size standpoint or a lot width or front setback or a combination of all three.
So your statement here, the staff, current language, is this what you're going to propose to put in under this page?
Under the proposed text, yes, sir. You see a strike through the current language and then what we would propose to add in. And we're going to do some additional research in regards to lot width and front setback, see if we need to add that besides that minimum ten thousand square foot lot size.
Good.
Ken, one question that kind of deals with this a little bit, but now, if people want to have an overstory tree in their front yard, the city requires you to get a permit or some other stuff to cut it down. Will someone be able to just cut it down now and put in an understory tree?
Well, I think on the individual, single residential lots, they're exempted from permit. We generally ask folks if they're willing to fill out one so that we have a record because we continuously are, always receive phone calls of neighbors in a community calling, so-and-so's cutting a tree down. And if that individual has come in and filled out the tree removal permit, taking a little time, it's not really required, but it helps us out in explaining to some of your neighbors that might be complaining because a tree is being cut down.
Are you sure there's no requirement for someone to cut a tree down in the city?
On a single-family residential lot, if you get into a specimen tree.
Well, now, how are you going to know if there's no way of permitting cutting that tree down? They're going to have it cut out before they knew when the specimen tree-
And a lot of that has happened. We do have citizens that will call and ask. We will tell them that permit isn't really required because single-family residential lots are exempted from tree protection and tree permit guidelines, as they're currently written.
So the only areas that they wouldn't be would be on commercial?
Yes, sir. Specimen trees, and like I said, homeowners will call us. We do ask them if they would take a little time to fill the permit out because in the five years that I've been with the city, we have seen where a neighbor will call, so-and-so's cutting a tree down. We're aware of that, they're not required to notify the city, but they did anyway. Kind of makes our job a little bit easier in discussing this when people call in with complaints.
Ken, what are you calling specimen trees?
For a evergreen, it's twenty-four inches diameter or larger, if I'm not mistaken. And for a hardwood tree, I think it's thirty inches or larger. I have to look it up to be specific, but there's a size and that's measured what's called diameter breast high, basically about four feet above ground level.
So if those trees are dying, wind blows halfway over, you got to do-
If it's diseased or dying, the regulations require that a arborist or certified forester or someone like that submit a report saying it's dying. We're trying to get Steve Green, the zoning administrator, through some educational classes as a certified arborist so the city can do that on their own, if you will, and move forward that way. If it's blown over by an act of God, that's an act of God. You can't control those kinds of situations.
With the past, we've had arborists, but they don't work for us?
No, so the arborist position was also involved with some zoning enforcement that was caught up in a reduction in workforce in 2009.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Next item at Page Three-Eight, Councilman Rush had asked about was in the Table Three-One about buffer between our four districts. That's typo and we've corrected that. Next item that Councilman Rush asked about was off-street parking for home occupation. That was in old regulations and is still in place, that one parking space would be required for a home occupation.
Back up on that from just a minute, tell me what, an extra off-street parking space is wished to start operating a home business. It needs to park to begin with?
There's supposed to be two parking spaces that can be within the driveway area, but it has to, the driveway has to be real big enough so that the sidewalk portion across the front of the street is not impeded by vehicles.
Do we have, do we have, do our building requirements now allow homes to be built that would not qualify for three vehicles?
There are some smaller lots that it would be extremely tight to get a third paid parking space. I'm not aware that anywhere it wouldn't be, but some of that paved surface might be right up against property.
Is there a definition of home occupation that-
In Chapter Four, in our additional requirements, we do have additional information about home occupations. We did add a whole section on specific uses that would be prohibited as a home occupation enlist, some acceptable home occupations, you know, professional offices, that sort of thing. If you will call, Mr. Mayor, we had quite a time several years ago with record services and some things of that nature with home occupation and all. That's part of the reason that in preparing this, we made amendments to the home occupation section and added a section that gave a listing of some prohibited uses for home occupation to overcome some of the things that we have discussed over the last four or five years.
Ken, what about a home-based business that has no traffic? What if I got an internet home-based business? How would that work? Why would I require an extra parking spot? I have no traffic.
But you can't 100% guarantee that you're never going to have traffic. What about a business vehicle or a business truck? That's the reason for the requirement for the one space.
The UPS trucks come to every house.
I'm not, no, I'm talking about, you have a consulting business. You have a vehicle that's specifically geared for that besides your personal vehicle?
No, I'm a whip designer for a home. Why do I need an extra parking space?
Well, I come to see you, you did the time, I will.
Boy, I didn't design yours. And I don't do that far away either.
Ken, how does enforcement of that going to work, relative to Mr. Cummings' question? Somebody's going to go downstairs and get a business license from the county? And she verifies that the address meets all the requirements before she issues that business license?
There's a section that deals with zoning certification. In regards to home occupation, there's a whole separate sheet with the business license application that has all of our current home occupation standards. They're required to sign that and acknowledge that they are familiar with the city Ken's requirements for home occupation, and they agree to abide by those.
But if we have, if we have some residences that perhaps might not qualify for the additional parking, seems to me that that eliminates them as any possibility of having an in-house, an in-home business, even if, like Mr. Cummings saying there, there's no way they're going to generate any traffic.
Can they apply for a variance for the parking requirement?
Yes, sir. And if the council wishes to address this through an administrative approval for non-provision of that parking space, we can certainly add that language, only case by case basis. Sir?
Okay, would you say no off-street parking?
Right. Well, we can, whatever y'all want.
Any, a home, in-home occupation should not require an off-street parking?
What happens in a lot of instances, you'll have folks start parking on the sidewalk and things of that nature.
Well, we know that from them.
Well, yeah, that's, that's violation law either way. I mean, you know.
We still get complaints about people parking in the front yard or part of the vehicle on the sidewalk now.
But is that not a violation now?
Yes.
Is it okay now?
Okay, why don't we just require any home occupation have adequate off-street parking, period? Why specify a number of spaces and not allow, and just not allow off-street parking? That's fine, if that's what you all want, that's what I would think, because, I mean, there are going to be a lot of businesses, especially in this internet. Mr. Cummings, you're always very specific. I can't believe you would allow something so flexible as that.
Well, I was thinking more long-term, helping Great Sky.
Ken, how many, how many parking spots are required for a single-family residence that doesn't have any on business?
Two.
Two. So then if I have a business-
It can be, you know, within the driveway or within a garage.
Okay, so I could put two cars in the garage and two visitors in the driveway?
Yes.
Okay, so, so then we really don't have any big issue with this?
When you're talking about housing without a garage, the main just had a driveway, the two cars have to fit on the driveway?
Yes, and they have to fit on the driveway between the house and the imaginary line of the sidewalk across the driveway.
But if you just said, if you change the home occupation rules to say, no off-street parking, I mean, no on-street parking is permitted, at least you have some ability to deal with a business that has constant traffic and there's always somebody parking on the street.
And you could have, the other way with this, you could have a business that has five visitors at one time and they're lined up on the street and still on business.
But you would, but you would, well, now, they couldn't, they don't qualify as a home occupation. Well, you're right.
Yeah, they could.
As long as they had room for one off-street-
I guess what you want to avoid is the on-street parking.
Right, it's not so much that you want them to have to have off-street, you don't want them to allow on-street.
That's what I would think.
But, I mean, parking is a hard thing to enforce anyway.
Yeah.
Because it's hard to be gone before anybody even-
And you could have control of that anyway with these businesses because you don't even know they exist a lot of the time.
Most of them are coming to get a business license.
Ken, could I ask you a different question on parking? CIV, someone has attorney's office or, or a lot of the, whatever it is, and what kind of any parking spaces do they have?
Depends upon the use, if you will. Offices, uh-
Downtown, you're talking downtown?
In the downtown area, you factor in the on-street parking within the core urban downtown district, you know, we have these subcategories with the central business district, low-density residential, medium-density residential, office, all of those specify different parking requirements and that sort of thing. Generally, office space requires one space for each two hundred, for each two hundred, two hundred and fifty square feet of those space.
Ken, I think one of the things that I, I like about the way this is set up, at least what it does in the eyes of the business owner, that makes them aware that they need extra parking and, excuse me, and if they're going to have the four or five people come to visit them and they only have space for one parking, they're going to know that they're in violation of something or other, and they'll probably try and avoid it. So I think, you know, this is probably the easiest way to accomplish what we want to do.
You're acknowledging, that's not going to go through the, hey, something I asked. Out past, there was a house that was for rent, had come back and asked me again. I said, I really don't know who contacted you, but I liked it. The house is going toward that block that was, that was for rent. They wanted to think about putting an attorney's office there. They said, if they did that, that they had to have more parking with that and allow-
Yes, they would have to have more parking.
Four spaces. They'd have four spaces in that one driveway.
They would have to, because an attorney's office is a professional office space, even, you know, you're talking somewhere out along East Main Street, depend upon exactly where it is, number one, they might have to request to rezon the property from, say, CBD low-density residential to CBD professional office or CBD urban core. But the total square footage of the structure would be factored into the number of parking spaces that would be required. For instance, the house, seven fifty East Main Street, they've got that parking area behind the house that accommodates quite a few spaces. We had quite a situation with that one.
Yeah.
Next item that we had a good bit of discussion about at last month's work session, dealt with portable signs, twisting, twirling signs, and I talked about, you know, new definition, human signs, that sort of thing. We already have some language in our proposed ordinance that will address this situation in which they're prohibited.
Did you skip the portable signs?
That's what I'm talking about, Council.
I thought you were talking about-
Oh, portable signs, vehicular signs, there again, the raids prohibit those.
Currently prohibited?
Yes.
Well, then we need to work on it forward, though.
Yes, sir.
The vehicular signs are already in violation?
Yes, sir.
Ken, let me ask you a question. What about, I've seen, I've seen signs for a travel agent that it's a little, the little car with all kinds of- little car with all kind of travel stuff all over it, painted like Muhammad College.
That would use for transportation purposes.
It's your name too.
Yeah, it is, across the street. But, but those are okay because of use for transportation.
It's a personal use. Besides the business use, I would assume.
All right, 'cause I've seen several instances with curious...
Can I ask you a question that's not relative to portable signs, but I had a businessperson asking me this recently. We currently limit signs to four-by-eight signs on buildings. Depends upon what kind of sign you're talking about. Well, he was under the pressure that we did. I'm not sure exactly what sign it was. It was an insurance agent. And his question to me was, why are you limiting it? Have no problem with limiting it to what, four, kind of the 32 square feet, but why is it limited to those? Why can't I get 32 feet out of some other configuration?
Um, that's in our current regulations and it doesn't... There is a section that deals with accessory signs that specifies four-by-eight. You're talking about wall signs or a monument sign that specifies 32 square feet, 50 square feet, 120 square feet.
It doesn't give dimensions?
No, sir.
Okay.
But there is a section in our current regulations that deals with accessory signs that does give a specific, you know, dimension.
And what's an accessory sign as opposed to a wall sign?
An accessory sign and we're hopeful to do away with that. It basically allows business to have an additional sign. It's not permitted, it's almost like a temporary sign.
That, you say was permitted or not permitted?
They've not required to fill out a sign permit for those. Sign regs, current sign regulations, a lot of big sorry.
I think you're gonna have a harder time enforcing this. Because if I've got, just as an arbitrary example, I got a real estate and I got on the side of my car, painting on my car, a real estate sign. And my car's parked from my real estate office. How's anybody gonna tell whether I've got it parked there for the primary purpose of acting as a sign or I'm using that vehicle for transportation? I think you got, I got, I think you got a real enforcement problem here.
Well, you're gonna have an enforcement problem with everything involving signs, but I think the intent involving the vehicular signs and portable signs gets to things such as automobile dealerships, putting advertising and name and interest rates and all on a vehicle, parking it in an off-site spot and leaving it there for, say, two weeks at a time, then move it to another location.
I mean, we, we see this all the time. We see it down at a corner with lesbian, River's Call, where somebody parks a vehicle.
You know, it's like they're in Eagles parking lot. You see that?
Same thing.
And it's not in front of their business, it's sitting up the street.
I mean, it's great to have this, but I don't think you're gonna be able to enforce it.
Till we get an enforcement.
Or, but even then, it's gonna be difficult to discern, to sort of...
You know the ones who are using it, but you...
Some you can tell, but...
You're in a well-designed business, you're not in a real...
What if they move from this spot to this spot?
I'm not in any...
I would say that's the ordinary course of carrying out its transportation function, moving it from one spot to the next spot, just like you say.
Bet you gotta move it every two hours.
If somebody illegal, somebody that parked in a parking lot and moved their car around, that's what you're, that's what you're prohibiting.
No, I think this is good, but I, I just think it's gonna be an enforcement nightmare, that's all. See, the city tried doing what, I think some years ago, what you're saying out there is that they didn't have, I guess, the, I don't know if they didn't have a number or whatever, but people go out every two hours and move their car and they were, they were claiming that they were just doing it to get around the door and then somewhere or another giving them tickets.
It was an attorney's...
That was on the two-hour parking lot or whatever.
The attorney's up there.
That's good.
Yeah.
But I'm talking about if, if, I mean, if it's a towed behind, propped up in a trailer, that's one thing.
Yeah.
Because then it's a sign.
Yeah.
And that's all it is. But if somebody has painted it on their vehicle and, and they park anywhere close to their business...
Well, that's the key, it's close to their business. The ones that you all know.
Well, if somebody else is...
I'm in English, I think.
I mean, the one you described, car dealer, they're on a whole, they're holding on to a piece of property.
A few of the way. That's what it is.
It is a bad enforcement problem, which is why it's not being important.
Yeah. The, the question we just brought up...
The city has tried to enforce it and just disregard it, just like another business with the banner signs in the right of way is actually going forward.
Just so we keep moving, if, if it sounds like nobody's opposed to leaving it in, it's a violation by enforcement, leaving less, once it's, once at the appropriate time, maybe Mr. Dyer and, and I don't know if it's appropriate to talk to the judge, but find out what our enforcement options would be if those people that are the most egregious of these violators are cited, what's gonna happen in the courts is...
If you take care of one, probably our problems, we've finished our... Is that appropriate, Bobby? Is it appropriate for us to tell the judge and say this?
What you're gonna say is you gotta have some objective standards. And, and I mean, to me, what you do is you make them move it. If it can actually move, if it can be cranked, if it can carry the insurance and all that, make them move it. And you could say it's there more than a day, you know, without moving.
I, I've seen vehicles, well, one right on the corner, across the street, Walgreens, a truck there, it says, you know, has a price on it and it's not transportation, it's from the automobile dealer.
And they changed, they changed the truck?
They changed the truck, so that would be in violation of this.
The best thing might be to, would be to permit them with an exceptionally high-cost permit.
I like that.
I mean, if they're willing to do it, they're gonna have to pay, but like right now, it's free advertising.
The problem we have is it's the definition we're talking about, who needs to come to get a permit? Then you have the same problem. Because you're defining who has to come to get a permit.
Well, that would be, that'd be pretty easy to find who needs to get one too.
Well, it's no, no easier than it is to enforce it now.
I mean, if you're advertising something off your site, that'd be pretty easy. I mean, if you're advertising on your own property is one thing, but if you're three miles down the road and advertising something three miles up the road, in that...
That's what I'm saying, but you, but if I've got my car painted with my company name on it and I'm going to somebody else's place of business to do business and I'm there three hours, am I a sign?
Yes, you know, that vehicle's parked there.
Do you really want that to be prohibited? You don't want to prohibit that, so it's the line between that person and the one that's not moving at all.
Right.
And how do you define that? That's what we're struggling with.
I take that because of enforcement.
And whether, that struggle's gonna apply, whether it's a permit requirement or just a violation. Either way, you gotta figure out who's doing it.
We'll continue this discussion with the city attorney and the city wouldn't come up with some additional or more appropriate language.
Which is gonna be whether the judge will support it or not.
Yes. Next item about prohibited signs, spinning signs from last month's work session. We can expand the definition of portable sign, section 30505, also prohibit signs in public right of way within 10 feet of the curb. Those are some options for consideration to address, if you will, folks that are out holding spinning signs, that sort of thing.
Is 10 feet it, is this arbitrary number, or is that a safety number? Is that expanded a little bit more, maybe 15 feet?
Uh, 10 feet is generally been recognized as an industry standard setback number for signs. I'm not sure if there's an engineering...
Well, the problem is your sidewalks are within 10 feet. And how are you gonna stop somebody standing on a sidewalk? The, the present twirler that I see all the time, he is in the road, because he's in the triangle.
Yeah.
They just need to go tell him, get off of there and get back on the sidewalk. That's in the road.
And they have been, part of the problem is code enforcement...
Police officers need to do that, not code enforcement. That's a, that's a traffic violation. Somebody is standing in the road. He's standing in a safe, on the curb, but he's in the road, there are two roads.
Why do you need a foot measurement anyway? Why not just say the right of way? Just say the right of way. If you're in the right of way.
Then they can't stand on the sidewalk.
Well, so what's wrong with that?
Well, then you're being, I mean, then you're saying you gotta be on private property.
Well, that's up to them, they get permission, get it as a private property.
No, I'm gonna tell you that.
I just think there is a sidewalk, right?
One of the, one of the problems with saying they can't be on the sidewalk is it becomes content-based at some point, because you can't prohibit somebody from carrying a protest sign and walking up and down the sidewalk.
Up and down to get a permit, good.
Well, you're gonna let, you're gonna let a business do it?
Permit, permit.
But you're gonna let a business come get a permit to twirl their signs on the sidewalk?
Absolutely.
If you're gonna let anybody do a sign, you gotta let the business do it, in my opinion, because you can't regulate it by content. It needs to be by safety. All these, we gotta remember, we have to be able to explain what it is we care about and what we're trying to prohibit.
Safety, you were saying.
So if they're on a sidewalk, they're unsafe.
Well, they're distracted.
Y'all, even one of y'all know of any communities that successfully implemented the no porting gyrating signs? Ace, do you know of any?
Outside of metro area, where we looked was generally in other states where they've attempted to introduce some language to address it. I'd have to go back and look specifically to see where those model communities are, how successful they've been.
One place that I was aware of is the, what, one solution they came up with was to allow them to each day put a yard sign in front of the, in the right of way, whether it's a twirly.
One of the issues with those twirling signs is some of them are eight to 10 foot long, that's talking five feet on each side of the twirler. He's spinning it, sliding back and forth, and the point is safety factor. Somebody kind of making that corner, entering the corner, they're standing there in the curb, you're in the dirt, spinning the sign, also they see somebody spinning it, whip around it and smashing some lanes. That is the issue.
But that ought to already be an offense. If we don't have an offense to cover that, then we need to create one that doesn't have to do with signs. That's why, if it's, if it's safety we're talking, why don't we just say you can't twirl your sign in a way that's unsafe?
Okay. But, well, the way to judge...
About what I'm saying, is that...
Obstructing, obstructing traffic. I mean, if you wanna say somebody can't twirl it, because that's a distraction, that's a different thing too.
I think the issue is moving out of the right of way.
That would probably be...
That's probably the best thing to do is just move it out of the right of way.
Safety factor, period.
Safety factor, period. And then you won't have people standing on sidewalks or anything like that.
Then you have to ban everybody.
That's it.
If nobody gets to be on the sidewalk, then you may have a problem with that, but that's all right. I'd rather fight that fight.
Yeah, I think that's the issue.
This is, this is a whole little dog game that we've had the past year.
I always felt sorry for those people, because that's the dumbest way I market anything I've ever seen. I just, giving somebody a job who couldn't get a job elsewhere.
Staying down there gray. Okay, safety factor. How do we run it?
Well, let's figure it out. We'll get Mr. Dyer and then come back to council on that item. Next item was accessory dwelling units, page 42. Mr. Rush had noted that in the text that it required two parking spaces. That is typo. In the off-street parking standards, it specifies one parking space and we would change the text on page 42 to one parking space to be the same as the parking table. Councilman Rush also asked about golf course and the additional requirement in chapter four for safety netting 32 feet abutting public streets. And he asked a question about City Canton's golf course and the city is exempted from zoning regulations, but the Canton Building Authority golf course is already in place and you cannot retroactively go backwards after a new regulation is adopted and force them to comply with these new guidelines. The reason for safety netting...
If, if they, if either golf course would, would undertake some expansion or modification of their facility, would this then apply?
Uh, potentially, I'd call Mr. Dyer. Again, like I said, you know, if it's a Canton Building Authority or a city-owned, it would not apply. If it's a private sector course and they wanted to make expansions to an existing golf course, it affected streets, they would have to put the safety netting up.
Yeah, the expansion.
Yes. Sexually-oriented businesses, Councilman Rush asked why we had that. Kind of like the manufactured home cars. The city already had these regulations adopted and what we have done is moved them out of the code of ordinances, put it in the zoning. We have updated the definitions, because there's a whole lot of definitions that have come out of other states that weren't in ours and things of that nature and plenty of things of. Mr. Dyer and I have spent a great deal of time in looking at this section, making sure that things are in place and in order to meet any potential court challenges. Quick, sir?
We're abouts.
What?
You said you and Mr. Dyer spent a great deal of time looking into this.
We just looked into the language, that sort of thing.
Just, sir. Recent, oh, recent, oh, okay.
A quick example to show you about not having these kinds of regulations in place. Water Robinson George. There was a piece of property right on one of the corner of I-575 that they permitted a restaurant. They did not have any kind of sexually oriented or adult-oriented regulations in place. This restaurant opened up and it was a full-mitted dancing club with restaurants. It was open 24/7. They got in and there was nothing the City of Water Robinson could do about it, because they had no regulations in place. It was permitted as a restaurant, they just didn't divulge that there was adult entertainment associated with the restaurant. That's an example to show why there's a need for these types of regulations.
Well, Mr. Rush, you won't have to travel to the car.
Ken, do we have, do we have a land use map that comprises that all these districts, a color map that shows where they're located?
The zoning districts?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's not in here, though, is it?
No, sir, not. I've got a PDF that I can put up on the screen here when we originally gave all the...
Will we get some of those printed out?
Sir?
Will we get some of those printed out?
I'll have Camille about full-size prints. When we gave out the first original copy of the draft of the zoning portion back in November of 2011, there was eight and a half by 11 color of that zoning map. And of course, you can't really tell much about it, because it's such a small size. I'll see if I can, I'll have Camille in regards to printing out some full-size, so the council members could have them. What I would propose is have another work session in which we can put the zoning map up on the screen and have a discussion just on the zoning map. I'll now yield forward Paige Hadley, the consultant, so she can cover some things with his whole guideline.
I just think it means, it would just mean more to me to be able to look at, she in particular showing where these districts with the new designations and legends, you know, or those designations, where they're located in the city. I mean, it's easy to talk about these numbers and everything and these designations, but where exactly are they in the city?
If I create a guideline from practical, it would be very difficult.
If I create a guideline from a practical standpoint, it would be very difficult. Right, no, I understand. Yeah, but I'm just saying, you look at our concentration.
One of the things that tripped up the previous administration was that they came out with a proposed map. And then they made changes and they had official map. But the proposed was out of circulation and everybody was using that. I think it's still on the wall down on these businesses now.
Make sure it says.
Make sure it says, this is not an official map.
Draft or something, all across it or something?
Yep. Make sure that any map you give us at the point of time, until it is officially, it has the written standard.
Well, we've got loaded up on the computer that, another work session. It has on there draft. This is not official.
Thank you. My name's Paige Hadley with AMAC. I appreciate your time this afternoon. Part of the UDC project is the curation of a supporting but standalone piece called Historic District Design Guidelines. The Design Guidelines document is intended to address and help guide design in the downtown area and support the city's ongoing downtown revitalization and economic development activities. So I'm going to give an introduction in essence to the document, the draft that you, I believe you will have. Touch on the organization of it and just some of the key topics. But to begin with, when we, it's inclusive with the name is Historic District, but what exactly is meant by that area? To know how or where these guidelines would apply. You can see the shaded area in blue is identified as the proposed local historic district boundaries. Local meaning locally designated or designated by ordinance. It's intended to encompass the area generally in the downtown area. And that's superimposed on an existing National Register-listed Canton Historic District, a much larger area. That designation occurred in 2010. In addition to the size of the two districts, the National Register District is, of course, much larger. But there's also a difference in the purpose of the types of districts. A National Register District, it is an honorary designation. National Register listing is a great education tool in order to help promote within the community the benefits of preservation, encourage property owners to maintain and protect their historic buildings. There are tax incentives for rehabilitation that if a property is in a designated National Register District, the property owner has the potential to qualify for rehab tax credits for commercial and residential buildings. Local historic districts provide communities with a greater opportunity to really guide and direct design of buildings, whether there's infill development in the downtown that could be a concern or major projects that could alter the exterior of historic buildings. So then the overall purpose of the Historic District and Design Guidelines associated with that is to protect the historic character of the downtown area by addressing building and site design through the review of exterior changes in appearance. This is not talking about routine maintenance, but substantive changes to the exterior of buildings. It would apply to new construction as well as demolition. Historic districts, local historic districts and Design Guidelines do not affect the use of a property. This is not zoning, has nothing to do with the zoning ordinance, doesn't regulate the design or alteration of interiors. And specific to the proposed boundaries of the local districts, we're speaking of any existing single-family dwelling is not intended to be subject to any kind of design review. We understand, as you can see from the map, that there are homes, part of the neighborhoods that are encompassed here. But the focus is more so on protecting the integrity of the traditional downtown area. If there is a residence, an existing residence where zoning supports the potential for adaptive reuse to, let's say, an art studio or a dental office, then if changes are made to the building to accommodate that use, such as a business sign or proposed additional paving in the front yard to accommodate additional parking, then that's something that would require review so that it can be ensured there are no detrimental impacts to the existing neighborhood or residential character in that area. The process for design review, this is a flow chart that we have in the Design Guidelines, intended to give sort of a snapshot view. The general idea is that an applicant with the proposed, say, there's a new project downtown to put in a new building, would go before the, to the Community Development Department to file the paperwork. A package of the proposed plans would then move to a to-be-designated Historic Preservation Commission, I'll talk about in a little bit, which would act as a design review board. They would meet monthly, review the proposed plans. And upon approval of the plans, a COA or Certificate of Appropriateness would be issued. That would then give the applicant the green light to proceed, including if there's the need to pull any permits by the city, then they would be allowed to move on with that. Sorry, this doesn't read well. This is a bit of a cheat sheet that we've included in the Design Guidelines. It's a matrix and encompasses four pages highlighting typical projects that might be undertaken and whether that project would actually require any kind of review. An example being, I think I mentioned earlier, routine maintenance. If someone is undertaking a project that is replacing rotten materials with in-kind materials, well, that's typical and we hope it's done and they can just proceed. If there's a proposal to demolish a nonhistoric accessory structure that's in the district, then the individual would go to the Community Development Department and then pull the necessary permit to do so. There would be no design review. The general rule for each of these is whether we're talking about doors or windows or roof materials, if replacement of materials in in-kind materials is proposed that relate to maintenance, then that can proceed. If you're changing the roof line, if you're putting an addition on a building that has the potential to have impact one way or the other on surrounding properties, that's the trigger. So each of these line items that are shown have supporting guidelines that are found in the rest of the document to provide guidance to both staff and the applicant. The document is organized into several chapters, beginning with Process, some key slides that we just showed. It also affords an opportunity to give an overview of the area's history. It talks about predominant building types. And then chapters four through eight is actually where we get into the specific guidelines. Beginning with chapter four, Guidelines for Site Design. This, to me, the first bullet is really the crux of this. The point is to encourage consistency with the established development pattern. There aren't any new rules or ideas that are being promoted here. It's basically be sensitive to the surrounding building heights, the setbacks, and build accordingly. The next section, Guidelines for Building Architecture, anything related to the facade, any facade elements, doors, windows, roofs, including side and rear facades. One thing that I want to note on this slide, if you can see, these are excerpted pages. In addition to text, we've also included photos as well as illustrative graphics to help provide additional guidance and provide a greater understanding of certain ideas of what may be appropriate or not as appropriate to do. There are guidelines for new construction. Again, infill development being an example. That would include additions to existing structures as well. And residential to commercial conversions, which as I mentioned, may be traditionally a single-family dwelling that is due to its zoning, has the potential to accommodate a commercial use. Sign guidelines, this is intended to be consistent with the existing sign standards for the CBD district. And so there are no conflicts here. It's just reiterating the particular section in the UDC that will address signs. But what it does do is give a little bit more information in the way of ideas for applicants or property building owners as far as what constitutes suitable materials and lighting to help give ideas when folks are thinking about what type of sign they'd like to put for their business. Guidelines for demolition, relocation, stabilization. Any plans for proposed demolition of a building in the Historic District is intended to go for review. Must require a COA for privately-owned properties. Relocation of historic buildings is somewhat rare, but could happen. That, too, there's a proposal to move it from its existing site. Would go before the HPC or Historic Preservation Commission for review. Deterioration by neglect where a property owner in essence allows a property to fall into disrepair, becomes a health and safety issue, so there's no other recourse but to demolish the structure. We've incorporated some language to try to head that off, allow the HPC in the city to find ways to work with the property owner to stabilize the building or mothball it, if you will, so that until a time presents itself that a new tenant or use can be found for the property, it doesn't fall in on itself or need to, or become a health or safety hazard. And I'm sorry, this is another one that looks good when I print it out and it's a little bit hard to read. The state offers a roadmap for designating local historic districts to which Design Guidelines then become attached. Specifically, the Georgia Historic Preservation Act here tells us, there's a big arrow at the bottom there. That's where we are right now as far as all of the steps, but a few we've skipped. So very quickly, at the top, in order to designate the district, a Historic Preservation Ordinance would need to be adopted. That ordinance authorizes the city to establish a Historic Preservation Commission, which is then authorized to undertake historic preservation activities in the city, such as identifying districts that are suitable for designation as a local district or National Register District. We have a draft ordinance that we've gone ahead and prepared, so it's at the ready should the time present itself to move forward. The city would then appoint a Historic Preservation Committee, which becomes, or Commission, which becomes a Design Review Committee. City residents, typically no less than three folks, generally about five people would sit on it. Rules or procedure would have to be adopted by the HPC. We have draft bylaws that have been prepared. And then actually formalizing and identifying all the properties and the exact boundaries of the local historic district. As you can see in the previous slide, there is a proposed boundary based on the larger National Register District boundary. The, there needs to be what's called a nomination report that would be submitted to the state saying these are the proposed boundaries and who's in it and why is it important. The report that was prepared for the National Register nomination was submitted years ago, which allowed the 2010 designation, so the city could just pull text for map. That would be easy enough. Use as a baseline. And then there's the actual designation ordinance designating the local historic district, taking us down to having Design Guidelines that would then apply to the district. There is the associated public involvement process, typical for having hearings at key points and making sure that there's notification to all of the property owners and occupants within the district. And once all of those things take place, then that's when the guidelines would apply. So that's my quick overview into something that I understand is probably very new. I appreciate you bearing with me and I'll be happy to take any questions.
I have a question and know very little about this, so forgive me. And I don't know who best to address this to, but I'll kind of talk about two specific things here in the downtown area. One is the Jones Building, which is owned by the county but located in the city. And if we were to, if they were to pull the facing off the building to go back to the old architecture, which is still in existence behind it, the, are there, do the credits go to the county or what? How is that going to, how does that work?
Well, it's, any property that's owned by local government technically does not have to go through the Certificate of Appropriateness or COA process. But the state law does prescribe the fact that there needs to be notice given to the Historic Preservation Commission about, I think, no less than forty-five days before any action by a local government to allow them an opportunity to provide comment. But if you're talking about something where there is more modern cladding that was put on the building and is proposed to be taken off, if it wasn't a, if it was a privately-owned property, that would, of course, go for review and most likely would be very well received because that's the intention, to try to kind of turn back the clock on properties to uncover their original historic materials. But technically, I guess on the one hand, this would be available as a resource and it would, if the county would want to use that or confer to this in making their decisions or helping them guide in their process, that's great. But they would not actually appear before the Historic Preservation Commission and have to be issued any kind of certificate in order to proceed with their project.
And they don't, they don't need the credit because the credit is a tax credit.
Right, yeah. The second, the second question I have is a building in mothballs. And we have one down the street that's in mothballs. It's owned by the county school system. And how do, how does that maintenance to keep that building from deteriorating further? What are the requirements of that type of building?
Well, again, that's, there are guiding standards, if you will, that are typical best practices that would apply. The extent to which that's addressed in the Design Guidelines is perhaps not as thorough as what could be found if you dealt actually with the State Historic Preservation Office and their preservation professionals. They can get into greater detail. But, again, that's something that the Guidelines could be utilized as a resource. But if that is a pressing, ongoing condition, I would recommend that outside preservation guidance be sought by the state through, again, the State Historic Preservation Office.
Be more specific. What is outside preservation guidance?
Well, the state, the Historic Preservation Division, the State Historic Preservation Office, they have professionals who deal solely with historic preservation projects and they have architectural historians. This is what they do day-to-day and can come out on site if a government has questions and wants to take certain efforts in order to stabilize a property. If that's what you're asking, that's not something where...
Well, what the stabilization is to take it down.
Well, okay, so proposed demolition, again, if it is, the way that the state law addresses this as far as application of Design Guidelines, if a property is owned by a local government, it does not have to apply for a Certificate of Appropriateness. It merely needs to give the Preservation Commission an opportunity to review and react or respond to what's being proposed.
The building just can be.
Okay.
There's nothing we can do about that one. And with mothballs, I mean, mothballs, you're talking about the city going in and doing something to a property. Because we can't really, we can make the property out of it. If they don't do it, what are you going to do?
Potentially. The idea, the first line of defense is wanting to reach out to the property owner and if certain steps are taken, then there's a proposed process. That's just very similar to how the city handles other issues of compliance. And that the city can, I guess, interject and make sure that steps are being taken.
And you would do that, you would do that with a historic building that you think is so valuable? As a historic building that you don't want it to fall in?
Well, I agree.
Or because you want to keep it preserved because, and I'm not sure we have any of them, but there may be something someday.
Well, just in general, just generally, just the public health and safety issue regardless of its historical significance. But in some areas, especially so, people are more sensitive to wanting to find ways in order to protect properties that are currently vacant.
What about, we have different levels of history in the same area. How are we going to come up with objective guidelines? going to come up with objective guidelines? Where you have older brick connected buildings, and then we have houses, and what, how do we deal with that?
That's a great question. And you say the word objective, and that's one of the things with guidelines, is there is a level of subjectivity, not nearly as black and white as what you strive for in your zoning and land development regulations. It's recognized that in a lot of downtowns, Canton is no exception, you have a variety of ages, you have historic buildings that, as you mentioned, there's history that's buried a little bit. What would be proposed for certain building, what really matters is immediate context. And so that is taken into account when someone goes before the board. So it unfortunately can be a little bit subjective, because there are materials that are evolving that in years past may not have been viewed as suitable, but certain changes have been made that allow more modern contemporary materials to affect the look of more traditional materials, and there needs to be that kind of discussion with the board. But there would not be, if someone wants to make a change that necessitates review, they're not going to be required to, well, you need to create something and make this look 19th century that never was. It's very much trying to be respectful of what's there, but ensuring that any changes that are made don't incorporate something that is so far or more removed or more modern than what's there. Does that really answer your question, because it's kind of a lot-
What happens if you have that building that is a safety issue, a hazard, and should come down?
Take it down.
Take it down.
Well, there's some other issues there, is that it's sitting in the middle of a much larger piece of land, and most of that has been just taken, everything's down except they use it for parking. It's right on the edge of the city, where the Board of Education could come in and put in a new structure that would bring them into the city, with the idea that they would design the building there to fit into the present architecture of the downtown area.
Boards of Education are considered a big part of the state of Georgia, the Department of Education, they're presented with local regulations.
I have one, I have one question.
Oh, wait, because, Ma, what do you, so, okay, you said that, what does that mean to me?
Take it down. If the Board of Education wanted to take the building down, they could, and they wouldn't have to comply with any of these designs.
Okay.
Because they are an instrument of the state of Georgia, the Department of Education. That's what I wanted to hear.
The question I have is if, if we adopted that ordinance and they had the commission, could they require a property owner to repair something that's an eyesore, like an empty lot that's got an ugly fence around it, that's a hole in the ground?
Well, what it can, well, I guess, a few parts. One, the property owner can be informed that there's document in place to help, perhaps whether it's a marketing tool or guidance that's available, so that shouldn't anything go back, then this is what it could or could not look like. But if it's, we're not talking about empty or vacant properties, it's just literally existing structures that are in the district and pose an issue from a health or safety perspective.
Could we make them put a picket fence instead of a cyclone fence?
Well, fencing, that is one of the, one of the topics addressed. That would be for new fencing. If someone was able to have a discussion and encourage someone to replace what they have with a more appropriate fence, that's one thing, but they wouldn't be required to authority of place.
Just like the 32-foot section that, oh, stuff that's in place already, apart to-
That's what I was afraid of.
We had wrought iron fans around there, would look fine.
This was sort of what I was asking, this ordinance isn't about making anybody change anything. It's just saying, if you are doing certain activities, you have to come and get a certificate of appropriateness.
Unless a private property owner is willfully allowing their building to fall in on itself, then there's a mechanism to try to step in for that.
Which we hardly can do. It's just that we would be doing it for purpose of this part of preservation as opposed to safety.
Right, that's it. So there are ideas that could be on the table to help provide inspiration for someone wanting to make changes to their property, but correct, nothing can be mandated by the city upon these taking effect.
Let me ask one question. Did I understand you initially to say that residential properties, unless they were changing use, were exempt from this?
For making any proposed alterations to the residences, that's not something that, when we developed this, that we were proposing that they would have to go for review.
May I ask why? Why not? I mean, that seems to, seems to leave out a major historical sector of the city.
It did, of course.
Mr. Mayor, when this original contract was initiated a little over two years ago, the National Historic District that is in place now with all the residential properties, that sort of thing, the intent of the contract was to develop based upon the existing commercial historic district that was already identified. And without having to go through any type of change orders through the consulting firm, that sort of thing, we stuck with the basics of commercial. If the mayor and council wishes to add residential, that would be my recommendation, that once we get Historic Preservation Commission in place, that they can work towards amendments with the guidelines to address the residential, is the way we had discussed this.
Well, I think, I think we need to move in that direction personally, because I, I mean, there's some homes that certainly you'd want to protect. And not only that, but there's, I mean, there's, there's an area here that is a, quote, one of the original developments, a cotton mill village there, that in my opinion ought to be protected, and instead of just cleared out one of these days, and new houses and different architectural schemes, I guess, developed there. But that was really, you know, for many years through the ARC, they were always talking about the vintage concept. We want to go to the vintage concept, where you walk to your work, you walk where you shop, you do everything, you know, walking or biking or whatever. Well, that was something, you go to school, you walk to school from this place. You go to the grocery store from that place, you know. That was really an intact, actually, that place was called Roosterville, that was the name of it. Now, I don't know if there are any roosters in there or not, but that's what this one was called. And this is in the old part of town here. There was another one they call Newtown, which was over near the lofts, that village up to the left across from the lofts there. And, you know, to me, that, that has a tremendous amount of potential there, if something could really happen in there through tax credits and everything else, to really provide a place where people live and can put some people and some activity in the downtown area. They go to bed at night in downtown, they get up the next morning, you know, and not just there on the first Friday or whatever and disappear.
Talking about that Roosterville will be able to be a nice, safe place to live and-
Absolutely, absolutely could be.
I mean, those buildings are suitable to where you-
Well, I don't know, I don't know what they're, what conditions some of them are in now, I have been in there years. But my guess is, is that some of them are probably acceptable, could be maintained or improved as time went on. Or there might even be some potential development come in and really want to, you know, bring that up to snuff out there.
Some of those properties are, the section you're talking about is kind of the north side, if you will, North Street, Main Street. Historic books, housing back this way, what I've seen, that's called Windy Hill Section.
And I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking about, some of them actually face Waleska Street.
Yes, sir.
And, and go around and curving, and the others are more interior, there's a church in there.
Some of those properties are within the proposed district, and they would be eligible to recreate this district for the tax credits and grant loans for improvements, that sort of thing.
But only if we include residential, right?
No, sir, they're within the district. These guidelines are geared towards a commercial development, commercial redevelopment, that sort of thing, as far as the guidelines how to do things. But as far as residential properties being within the district and being available for tax credits for improvements, things of that nature, they would be eligible for that. We just don't have specific residential guidelines. We have some general information of the residential nature of structures, and if they're going to be converted to office. Again, the bottom line, when all of this started, there was a commercial historic district already in place, and the contract was drawn and executed, they made, while the other historic district was still in review, if you will, through the state of Georgia, a national historic register that expanded outward greatly with residential. I took it, I guess, that we wanted to stick with the commercial district, and not want to come back before council with a change order with additional pricing to expand beyond the commercial, thinking that we get this in place, one of the first things Historic Preservation Commission could tackle is look at residential, and if there are specific residential guidelines that they would want to add in this, then they can look at whether there are other districts that need to be designated. It would be some of the things that we would think Historic Preservation Commission would take on right out of the gate.
So what are the risks in waiting?
There are no risk in waiting, it's the fact that the way the original contract was drafted, residential guidelines added into this, going to be a change order, we'll have to pay more money.
I guess I'm, as the risk to the properties, changing the properties, they could be easier changed, or, you know, other structure or-
If you didn't have a preservation ordinance, if you hadn't have this in place, the risk is that they can tear them down and build whatever they want back.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying they can't do that now?
They can do that.
Yes, they can do that.
They wouldn't be able to-
I mean, if you only include the commercial now, can you do the residential?
If, if, if I understand, the Historic Preservation Ordinance would not let somebody just go tear a house down and build it back. They'd have to meet some guidelines of what's to be built. So if you don't have anything in place, they're free to tear it down and build whatever they want. If you want to control what they could build back or repair, you put this in place.
Or tear it down.
They might still be able to tear them down, right? We have nothing in this ordinance that keeps them from tearing down, they just have to go get permission.
Well, what you're saying is-
They could be denied with this sort of-
What you're saying at that one time, since we don't have any guidelines that went in at that avenue, they'd have to ask for permission, and we'd be developing the guidelines at that one time.
Well, you can't put it, you can't do it without guidelines. You can't restrict anybody without some guidelines. There is a subjectiveness to it, but there has to be some objectiveness to it.
Well, if it just-
But without any guidelines, then they could do it even afterward. Is what you're saying?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, if you put the preservation ordinance on place, you will have guidelines. There's no reason to put it in place.
That's a commercial, that's a commercial, though.
If you add the residential, you're still going to have guidelines.
Yeah, later.
Once they go-
You can't ask them, what's the, what's the risk in not doing residential now? The risk is that they can tear it down and build whatever they want.
Yeah, right. Well, we got that risk today without any.
If they continue that.
If the district now includes Roosterville, that they've got to come in.
Not with guidelines.
You've got, there's two different things.
As far as the ordinance itself and the designation ordinance identifying the district and all of the properties within the district can include everything. What we're talking about as far as the design guideline standards, it does not address residential to the extent that it should, it would if this was a full-on commercial and residential. But one thing that could be done if there was great concern about that area is locally prepared guidelines are intended to be just one resource. The Secretary of Interior has standards that are utilized across the nation that can be used in tandem with the more local specific guidelines. So if it was felt that if there was the need to ensure that residential areas were also subject to review, and these standards, as they currently are proposed, don't get into the level of detail necessary to guide proposed projects, there are other resources that the HPC can use and have it there, have available to them in making decisions. And that's actually already stated in the draft ordinance, that the Secretary of Interior's, what they recommend is always as sort of the go-to, and then, but localities are also encouraged to have more detailed, specific standards as well that can be married together and provide guidance to the HPC when they're making decisions.
So if, if, if we were to proceed as, I guess, we've got to move it here in this direction with just basically a commercial, then would this ordinance need to be changed where it says in order, one of the purposes is in order to stimulate revitalization of the business districts and historic neighborhoods, and to protect and enhance local historic aesthetic attractors to residents and so forth. So would historic neighborhood need to come out of that?
No. Again, that, that, that district and the language can still stand, but as far as having the way that the guidelines so far have been crafted, these could not be used in making a decision. You all can still say, if there's a need or a proposed change to a home, if there's an addition, if there's a proposed demolition, if there's a proposed new construction, you've got to come before the board or the HPC. But they would have to utilize another resource in conjunction with these to make a decision, because this is fairly silent in the way of providing guidance on what is appropriate.